Who's our leader here?
Well, we haven't had one since Mr. Preston resigned, so.
I mean, I'm still leader?
No.
Yeah, that's it.
I, uh, I have, have, there typically, uh, we, uh, have somebody calling meeting to order and then I preside over this as your solicitor. I make absolutely no decisions tonight, other than the wind to go home. I will advise the zoning hearing board on the legal issues, either in public or in private, depending on which way we decide to go. And, uh, they shall render their own decision and shall respond to a roll call vote. When they decide, normally, we take a executive session or whatever to caucus to discuss it, where I give them the legal opinions and they can make their own mind. If you don't have any objection, I'll call zoning hearing number one to order, which will be related to parcel fourteen dash one oh five point zero three dash one fifty-two forty-one Sullivan Street, Ombud, Canton Moos. As a disclaimer, I am a member of the Canton Moos. I don't think it's a conflict and no one's raised it. Is anybody gonna raise it right now? I will dispose of it right away. Although I can't say I'm a very good Moos member. I can't tell you the last time I was inside. We'll proceed accordingly. An application was received by the Moos regarding signage. We have been provided with that application. We've provided with a advertisement and we've provide, been provided with the, what the zoning officer deems the important part of the ordinance. Couple of questions. Is the sign already up?
Yes.
One other thing I'll make, normally what we do is we ask the Appian just to save money if they would agree to accept a written decision by mail, so we don't have to re-meet later and hand it to you. Just causes trouble for advertising and things like that. I have to have this typed up and look halfway presentable because nobody can read my writing in three days and really me. Any questions so far from anyone? How many people here intend to testify? If you do, raise your hand, please.
You want for both matters?
No, just the first one.
Just the roots? Okay.
Anybody from the Moos? Do you solemn swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, as you sort of render on the last great day?
I do.
I do.
Would you two in the back state your name, please?
Scott Palmer.
Behind him.
Jim Colton.
Jim?
Yeah.
Jim.
If we can call Amy first. Amy, you received this application from the Moos and the fees have been paid?
Yes. Yes.
And you advertise this, uh, according to statute?
Yes.
And all the timeframes have been made?
Yes.
And the Moos has a digital sign already up, is that correct?
Correct.
And that violates the current ordinance how?
Um, it does not meet the regulations on the five hundred feet with, um, from a traffic signal intersection and five hundred feet from a residential use and the maximum dimension requirements for the area is larger than the zoning ordinance allows. It's twenty feet squared instead of, and twelve is what the ordinance allows.
And the residential area is right across the road, right?
Yeah, kitty corner, a little bit down, but it's still within five hundred feet.
And no one is taking any position that you know of against this modification?
I've received no communication from any of the mailings that went out.
The sign that this replaced, was a variance given for that one?
I don't, not that I'm aware of. There was nothing in the file. But it was not electronic.
Was it relatively the same size or no, you know?
I believe it was about the same size, right, Jim?
Exactly the same size.
Yeah, exactly the same size.
Does any member of the zoning hearing board have any questions of Amy?
When you said the mailing's gonna, how, how many people, like, what was just the, on that block?
Usually do like a block radius.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else? How, how far is the sign currently from the light?
Two hundred and eighty-one feet. I didn't measure to the residential area, but that'd be pretty close, if not even maybe a little closer.
Has anyone, have you viewed it at night?
I'm sure I have. I mean, it's not, so a zoning, in your packets, I did issue a zoning permit for static use. Um, there were times after that that it was being used transitional and I would ask the Moos to not do that, um, and they would stop it. Couple of times it started back up, but I would send them another letter. They were never cited for anything, or anything like that. Um, yeah, I've never had any complaints from anyone that it's too bright at night or anything, but it also, I don't know if it's been transitional at night, you know, for it to be noticeable.
By transitional, you mean plugged in, is that what?
No, it's plugged in and lit now, but it's just a static message. It's not a moving message.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. So it was permitted currently, zoning permitted currently as a static sign.
So is this very similar to the one that's over top of the theater, at least in principle?
In principle, yeah.
It's a little bit bigger, obviously, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Palmer, are you for, anybody, anybody have any questions of her? Mr. Palmer, you represent the Moos. Do you have any questions of Amy?
No, I, other than, I would like to know if there was ever, ever once any complaints on the sign, just so we're clear that there was no complaints that I know of, that we haven't received any.
No, good one.
Even when the sign was in the static thing, by however that happened, that there was no, no complaints even then.
No.
Mr. Palmer, you're up to testify. What do you wanna tell us? Why do you have to ask for this variance?
Well, uh, the Moos is just, you know, it's, we're trying to, uh, we do community things. We like to post community things on our sign. I don't think there's too many organizations in the town of Canton that does, does what the Canton Moos does, um, for the community. So we're just trying to, you know, put our message out.
Will you advertise on that sign or is it just activities that occur inside the Moos Lodge?
That and, and, uh, if we have any special fundraisers going for different things or whatever, for different organizations.
But you don't take any advertising for favors or money for any other organization or anything like that?
No.
You do yet realize that somewhat violates the ordinance too if you do that. It does violate the ordinance, okay? Does any member of, uh, the zoning hearing board have any questions of Mr. Palmer? Mr. Colton, you're up.
I just added some more facts to everything. I mean, we had the, we put the sign in, uh, we did, it can be adjusted for brightness and, uh, Chris set it up so that it would be, you know, driving visibility and so it wasn't too bright according to the PennDOT standards. So it can be, you know, changed. If it is too bright, we can dim it down more, but it should be within regulation of, you know, PennDOT's, uh, standards and everything. There was a whole conversation with PennDOT, thought, thinking we was gonna need a PennDOT permit that, uh, Amy had, I worked with, you know, Amy who to talk to, and so I talked to PennDOT as long as it wasn't advertising for other people other than just ourself, PennDOT said we didn't need a permit. So we went through all that and make sure that, you know, PennDOT was okay with everything and so.
So PennDOT does regulate how, how bright it is, is that correct?
How bright it is, how fast it changes.
Those regulations are actually in your packet. I think it's the last sheet, Pat.
Does any, uh, zoning hearing board member have any questions of, uh, Mr. Colton?
No, that was my question. Have you been in touch with PennDOT according to the regulations?
Yeah, I think I sent the, the PennDOT lady's response back to you, didn't I, Amy?
Yep. I put that in my notes for them.
The what?
The PennDOT, that she had, and part of my notes were that PennDOT said they didn't require a, a permit since it's on premise, but they did have the regulations that I set forth. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Have you applied for the building permit through code inspections yet that was in the letters, all the numerous letters I sent you?
I talked to Justin from code and I don't, have to ask him.
Well, he doesn't work for them anymore.
Yeah, he's, he's.
I talked to them today and a permit is required, so I don't know what Justin told you, but, um.
Permit as far as to have it there or for what was it?
For the mechanical side of it. They require a permit since it's commercial and it's a lighted sign, so you will need to get that permit. But it was in the letters that I had sent you, so, just like the PennDOT one was.
I remember, uh, talking to them, we had the permit for when we had it installed, but.
Now, they haven't issued a permit since your storage unit in two thousand and twenty. Is what she told me today.
I'll ask, I'll ask her, because I know, I keep talking about her, my whole neighborhood in place, so let's see what happens there.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
Wait, well, so this will be a variance, right?
Yeah.
So with the variance, it'll stay with the lifetime of the lock, correct? So if the sign goes down, they don't need to reapply or anything, correct? Put a new one up if this one were to break?
No, they would have to apply and put a new one up.
But I mean for the variance, the variance would, they could still have the sign change and all that?
Depends on what they're putting up and depends on what, when they apply for the permit, what the view is. For example, the ordinance could change. The sign that you're putting up, even if it was the same one, it may change. It may be bigger, it may be smaller. I, I did, to answer your question, I don't know the answer to that. It could be or it might not be, yes.
The variance would stay, but it would be if it's on the same parameters of this sign versus a new sign.
Probably, yes. And you gotta remember, there's a problem with lapsing too.
Right.
If you don't replace it within a year.
Right.
The variance lapses.
Right.
And that could get particularly hairy if, like, for example, the, uh, lighting doesn't work and it sits there for a year, you would have a problem, okay? So you have to be astute to that.
Right.
And, uh, don't be, as they say, pound foolish, get it fixed, okay? If you wanna continue your variance, if it's granted. Do you have a, a place we could caucus without moving the whole crowd?
Yeah, we can go into the police station, can't we?
Call a meeting back in session. I have been asked to try to put a decision together on this. And I want members of the, uh, zoning hearing board to place close attention because I am old and I might miss something. The zoning hearing board will grant all requests for variance to the Canton Moos Lodge regarding this signage with the following conditions. One, that they apply for and are approved a permit within the next ten days. Two.
Is that the permit from code inspections?
Correct.
Thank you, just making sure.
Number two, that all PennDOT regs will be complied with. And that even if, and if PennDOT does not enforce them, the borough retains the right to. Three, the zoning hearing board shall have continuing jurisdiction of the brightness of this light. In other words, if it is alleged that it's too bright, someone would have the option to apply for a, uh, enforcement or modification. Number four, although it's not been alleged, uh, or even asked for, we want to clear that there's no sound on this sign. Did I miss anything, folks? Would someone move that in the form of a motion, please?
I move that in the form of a motion that we have heard the Canton Moos request.
Give me a second. Let's take a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ruah.
Yes, no, indifferent?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Most?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Declare the motion carried. Does anyone on this issue have any questions of me, we're checking forward to the board? You're clear with what we gave you, Mr. Palmer?
Well, kinda. On the brightness.
Just on the brightness.
You're all right with that?
Yeah.
Do you need a copy of the PennDOTs or did Danny send them to you, Jim?
She sent them to me.
Okay, 'cause I had them too, just making sure, okay.
What the time, you know, like, yeah, all the time change.
Yeah, okay. I, I assumed she did, but I just thought I'd ask, 'cause I hear from them, so.
If that's the case, we'll declare this, uh, no other questions from anybody. We'll declare zoning, uh, here, the zoning hearing on the Canton Moos closed. And we'll take a five-minute break. Let's call the, uh, second hearing to order. Parcel number fifteen dash one oh five point zero four dash one forty-eight. One eighteen S E, Second Street, Canton, Pennsylvania. Property owners are Brian and Amy Cobal. And Amy is basically the, uh, operator of that beauty shop, which is the subject of, uh, of a prior zoning hearing held back years ago, where someone's gonna bring up my decision, which I wrote back in God knows when.
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and when?
Six.
Yeah, couldn't be more right. Uh, this is a little irregular from what we have. Are the Cobals here?
Yes, sir.
Um, who's gonna testify on behalf of the borough? Just you? Let the Cobals and Amy raise their right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, I do.
I do.
All right, the petitioner here is the borough, which is somewhat unusual. So Amy, tell us why we're here.
Um, summer of two thousand and twenty-three, the borough paved Second Street, and in doing so, we reclaimed our right of way and our berms. At the July tenth council meeting in two thousand and twenty-three, council member Brian Cobal brought up that in two thousand and six, they had a zoning hearing and were granted a variance for parking along the street and asked when their area would be backfilled with stone. I advised him at the time that letters had been sent to all residents advising there would no longer be on-street parking and informed Mr. Cobal that the zoning board could not grant a variance for parking on the street and that the variance was for the specific square footage and how many place, parking spaces were necessary. He argued that at the time that the zoning board did grant parking on the street, and I again responded that the board did not have that authority. I pointed out in the zoning decision where it referenced parking within the subject property. Um, on July twelfth of the two thousand and twenty-three, I sent a letter to them addressing his concerns raised at that meeting and advised that I reviewed the file to attempt to provide a clear explanation of that decision. Uh, at the November thirteenth council meeting, President Schultz stated that he didn't believe the Cobals agreed upon that explanation and made a motion to send the matter back to the zoning hearing board as stated in the decision which motion passed.
Do you, uh, you indicated that prior to, as you said, reclaiming that parking area?
Our right of way and putting the berms back with grass.
You indicated that you had sent a letter. Did Cobals get one of those letters prior to it?
Yes, everybody on Second Street, that one, that would have been affected by that paving.
And that has been done?
Correct.
I went down and looked at it today.
Yep.
Have you, have any complaints from anyone that parking for this beauty shop is inadequate?
No.
And I have also seen that the Cobals, actually, I was led that way by my wife, who, as a customer, her, obviously, by my hair, I don't go anywhere. That they have made onsite parking?
They have added to their front driveway, I think, last year, yes.
And that is approved and it's not an issue with the borough at all?
No.
The language that brings us here is language that I wrote for the zoning hearing board back in oh-six. However, a board adds, as the borough could apply, should parking become a problem, to have the matter reconsidered by the zoning hearing board to establish parking. However, the requirements at the time would have, would only be what is required in the ordinance now, one parking place for under square feet of commercial activity. So as I read this, and obviously, I've received some notice on this. And I will concede that two things. One, I have not been able to locate my file and based on the age of this, I probably destroyed it because it's over ten years old. But, whether it would have had any notes or not, in conclusions of law, number sixteen, I write, the board concludes there is adequate parking on the subject property. That obviously at that time wasn't true. It's probably what was meant is there's adequate parking for the subject property. Now, the facts we have here are as follows. The borough has removed the street parking. The zoning hearing board has no control over the borough. The only thing we can do is apply a prior ordinance to the problem as I reserved in here on the parking issue. However, the most important thing to the Cobals, I would think, are that no one is going to use parking to revoke her home occupation. In other words, say there's inadequate parking for it, which is a condition of the ordinance. That's not a, it doesn't appear to have been a problem. No one's told me it's been a problem. And they've already provided for a position there. Now, there are several things I don't know the answer to. Nor do I really care, but I'm gonna voice them just to try to clear the air on this. If they had no alternate use for parking, would the borough have stopped of taking away their street parking? And the answer is maybe. PennDOT would, would not have done this, probably. They would go around it and grant the parking, if you notice, up and down the streets. I caution, uh, it'll be interesting to see what happens in the future. If you drive around town, there's gonna be an awful lot of the same situation taking place. I'm gonna be reclaiming an awful lot of property. There's gonna be a lot of gashing of teeth. But in this particular case, that's what I see. Now, the zoning hearing board has two choices. They can take my advice right now that we, that you can do nothing about Second Street parking. And I believe the Cobals are only here because of Second Street parking. Is that correct, Mr. Cobal?
Yes, sir. I just, uh.
Well, here, I, I wanna caution you because all you can do by testifying is get yourself in trouble.
Right.
Okay? Mrs. Cobal, do you understand that?
Yes.
Because here's the problem. If someone argued that you didn't have enough parking down there.
Right.
You could try to revoke your variance. No one has done that.
Okay.
So therefore, you're there. You've rectified it. They've said your parking's legal. And you can decide what you wanna do independent of the zoning hearing board. If you wanna meet with somebody, your hire lawyer, do whatever you wanna do. But I have my jurisdiction. This is all I can do. And, uh, what I would suggest to the zoning hearing board is that we would adjourn this hearing and caucus for a decision right now. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yes, agreeable to me.
Let's go back to it.
If I get this done, I'll go and read it.
We've got three days or so left. We're running out of time on this.
Before I go back on the record, while I'm on the record, I can do this. I would think it would be, it would be remiss if I didn't state that.
You're off, I can't, you're off.
That's fine.
Look, okay.
The original decision was rendered by the zoning hearing board of Roman Schuman, Doc Rushman, Stu Streeter, Glenn Trigg, and me. Schuman moved away, and I'm the only one of those, the other three left alive, so, but as you can tell, I'm getting close, all right? The zoning hearing. The zoning hearing board makes the following findings of fact. The zoning hearing board considered the application for a home business back in two thousand, or back in two thousand and six, and rendered a favorable decision to the Cobals, or sort of Coles. Specifically, the variance had to do with the size of the building and the adequacy of parking. Testimony was received, that the borough has reclaimed its full right of way on Second Street, and has removed that parking, which prior to this date was used by the Cobals for their business. Three, since this happened, the Cobals have established parking on their property. And testimony is received, that there has been no evidence presented to the borough, anybody, that that parking is not adequate to promote for her business. Therefore, the zoning hearing board rules as follows. The zoning hearing board has no jurisdiction over Second Street, as that decision is the providence of Canton Borough. Third, the zoning hearing board finds that parking for the home occupation of Cobals is adequate with the addition of the parking lot on their lot. Three, testimony of the park, the parking lot has been approved and has no violations. Period. That would be the decision of the board. Does anybody have any questions before I take that as a motion?
Will someone make a motion, or we adopt this?
Thank you.
Add to that, the decision of the prior word of council reconsidering this on parking is removed because the Cobals have provided for parking on their own lot. That would be added to that motion. Would someone make a motion to adopt that as a adjudication?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion. We roll call it, please, Amy?
I will. Uh, Mr. Ruah.
Yes.
Ms. Bailey.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Most.
Yes.
Ms. Sutton.
Yes.
I, uh, there are two, three possibilities here at the zoning hearing board. Anna Silstra has done her job. One is if everybody's happy and leaves happy, which is unlikely. Two is that, the second best solution would everybody leaves and everybody's mad, or one on one. We all have women in this community. We all have rented papers, we all know what's going on. Hopefully, this will put this to bed. I know it's not the result that people wanted, but we only have what the law prescribes for us to regulate zoning, and we only have the authority given to us by the borough council and by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Are there any questions of me before we go home? Any questions of any council member, zoning hearing board member? Therefore, I will close the meeting. Get that to me too, please. You should have a decision within a week, okay, in writing. I will add that you have the right to.